The Race for Watertown City Council. Seven News Town Hall Forum at Jefferson Community College. Sponsored by Bad Apple Social and Bad Apple Downtown. Here is your host, Jeff Cole.
And good evening, everyone, and welcome to our Town Hall Forum here at Jefferson Community College. Seven News and the Center for Community Studies teaming up to hear from the seven candidates running for Watertown City Council in the June primary election, and that is on June 24th. The top four vote-getters, of course, moving on to the general election in November. Thank you to each of the seven candidates for being here this evening. We will note that Councilmember Cliff Olney, who lost his effort to get on the ballot due to complications with the petition process, is doing a write-in campaign to keep his seat, although Mr. Olney is not part of our debate here tonight. So how will this work? I will start out with a set of questions, and we'll be going down through the row of our candidates. And candidates, your answers should take up no more than two or three minutes. If they do, we'll politely ask you to move on, and we'll go to the next person. And our goal here is to make sure that we do hear from everyone and have everybody represented, and try to give the equal time to everyone. We will take a break, one break. It'll be roughly in an hour, and that'll be about a two-minute break. What that's going to allow us to do is to reset, and we can get some questions that are coming from the audience that have been given to us out at the beginning, the front of Sturt's Theater here tonight. Those questions will then be able to be given to me and give us that ability to get those questions. So some of the questions will be used here tonight as we have the audience members here. Not all of them will be used because some of the questions we might already have addressed, right? So we want to make sure that we're keeping it fresh with the topics, and we intend to do that. All right, so begin with some opening statements. And typically, I think that, and our candidates will be able to introduce themselves, I think they're well-known already, but Mr. Velasquez, on the very end, we're going to start with the V tonight, they're in alphabetical order, but we'll start with Mr. Velasquez to give us our opening statement of about 90 seconds, two minutes, but welcome to each of you, and we'll start, please. Thank you.
Thank you. So first, I'd like to thank WWNY and Jefferson Community College for providing our community with the opportunity to hear directly from the candidates in an election that will likely shape the future of our city. So our city is in decline under the incumbents, but the decline has accelerated and our economy has stagnated. Dysfunctional city government and an unhealthy obsession with the past has come at the expense of our city's future. You deserve new leadership, not the same political theater and tribalism often prevalent on the council today. My vision is simple: learn from the mistakes of the past while putting our residents first by looking toward the future. I believe in taking a moderate, sensible approach to local governance. This evening, I'm looking forward to hearing from you, the voters and residents of Watertown, and offering you a positive, forward-looking vision that addresses our aging infrastructure, public safety, revitalizes decaying neighborhoods, returns residents, or retains residents, and changes the perception surrounding our city. Make no mistake, we face many challenges in the years ahead. These challenges require a collaborative, a collaborative approach. I don't see our city as divided into factions. I see us as one community, and it's time we unite to tackle these issues together. I hope to earn your vote when early voting begins this Saturday, June 14th, or on Election Day, June 24th. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Shore.
I'm Robert Shore, candidate for Watertown City Council. Wish to thank WWNY TV also and JCC for having this forum here for everybody tonight. Thank you for those who are participating in the audience. Born and raised here, just about a lifelong resident here, graduated in 1986 out of Watertown High School, further education here at JCC for a little bit. I'm running as your candidate for the needs of the city and the city taxpayers and not the wants. Thank you.
Mr. Shore.
I also would like to thank WWNY and also for JCC for putting on and hosting this event. It's a great opportunity for people to be able to come and listen to all the viewpoints of all the candidates. I think most of you know me by now since I've been in office for almost eight years, and I'm running for my third term. I've been a longtime resident with my husband Chuck. I'm a graduate of Vica College, and I've been a business owner for 25 years. I've served on the boards of many local organizations, and I have been in various leadership positions. But let's cut to the chase. There are things that I wish to bring up in my opening statement. I think it's important to point out that we have seen the change in our community over the last few years, unfortunately one of hate, divisiveness, and negativity. Our current mayor has refused to denounce a social media page that thrives on harassing and bullying people, including me. Since Tuesday's debate, I have been the subject of no less than 14 memes, and some of them are despicable. I'm okay with that, but I do believe that's harassment, and I think other people are tired of it. I'm sick and tired of being smeared for standing up for what I believe. It's almost like they want to silence me. We've heard that before, but I think that we, you know, we need to move on from that, and I hope that everybody here might come out and say that they denounced that page too. I think that if our mayor denounced that page, it could go a long ways in trying to heal this community. But the hate and the bullying on that page is despicable. You have adults bullying adults, and I think they need to be called out for that. And I hate to say it, but Jeff, even one of one of your coworkers has been said to be involved with that page. Tonight, I'm asking for a formal investigation with the use of taxpayer funds to politically attack sitting and former council members at the expense of former Mayor Smith, who spent $19,000 just in filing ethics charges and having them written with an attorney that had a clear conflict of interest that racked up $19,000 before he was dismissed. There are even more bills that need to be investigated. To me, that is corruption. You know, why do we have people that are no longer in office that are using our attorney and racking up those expenses? I think there are so many unanswered questions that we really need to get to the bottom of it. I believe the city needs to commit one way or the other about what we're going to do at Thompson Park. Do we scale it back and close everything and only have local residents use it? Or do we want to maintain everything that is in the park now and into the future and make it the tourist destination that it is, but also could be even better? Either we concentrate on making it better and consider that the true recreational hub of Watertown, or we just want to say, let's cut everything and let the park die. It's been said on a radio station that six out of seven candidates here voted for Kamala Harris, and that's been a subject of a meme today. It may seem trivial, but I will tell you, I voted for President Trump. My concerns were with the economy and especially border security since we are close to the border. I felt that he was the best candidate that could handle that considering the previous administration. I know another candidate has mentioned this, Colin Burns, but I think that now's the time to reconsider cannabis dispensaries being allowed in Watertown. I think that we opted out to make sure that we wanted to see what the regulations were going to be coming down from Albany. Now that we see them operating and so far without any level of crime, I think that that discussion needs to happen. We need to get back into into that discussion and see if we can bring in $200,000 a year in sales tax revenue. I think it's worth a discussion, and no pun intended, well, maybe a pun intended, right now it's a smoking hot topic. And I want to say, I have been able to work with people of all personalities. You've seen it on council, many different kinds of personalities, and I continue to be able to serve if I'm so fortunate to move on on June 24th. I certainly appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And just for the record, the employee that you're referring to is now in the news department, which is objective and is now part of the news department, which I lead. Mr. Osborne.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Channel 7. Thank you, JCC. Thank you, everyone in the audience today to get informed during such a critical election cycle for our city. I'm Doug Osborne. This is my third time running for Watertown City Council. I previously, I ran previously in 2015 and 2023. I'm 42 years old.
We'll fix that.
I'm 42 years old. This is my third time, oh, I'm a lifelong resident of Watertown along with my wife Stacy. I graduated from IHC and JCC. I later transferred to the University of Albany where I obtained my degree in public policy and administration. During my college career, I interned at the New York State Governor's Regional Office here at the State Office Building and at the City of Watertown Planning Department. Upon graduating from college and officially returning back to Watertown, I was fortunate enough to gain employment with a series of small businesses in the city, often witnessing the challenges and successes they face day to day, which gave me a deeper appreciation for what they do and the hard work entails to thrive in a state which is so unfriendly to businesses. Currently, I'm a probation officer with Jefferson County and was previously a Child Protective Services caseworker for about seven years. Both disciplines have not only given me an intimate look at the city's public safety needs, but expertise in community outreach and responsiveness. My background and experiences have given me the skills, tools, and temperament to look at our issues objectively and with healthy scrutiny, which I believe would translate well to city council. I'm running again because I believe in public service. We need a cohesive and policy-driven council that is serious about governing and not about political expedience. If elected, I would do my part to put petty politics aside, remain responsive, proactive, and policy-driven.
Thank you. And to the sound folks, we're just giving a little bit of feedback down here if that can be fixed, but thank you. Pete Monaco, please.
Thanks, Jeff. Keep in mind, mine's kind of brief here. Hi, folks. My name's Pete Monaco, and I resident here in the city for all my life. You know, I care for this city and am deeply concerned about the unhoused population, unkempt properties, younger adults not coming back to the roost. I grew up on the north side, brothers lived on the west end for their old time, as you know, that's the sand flats. I hold a BS degree from the State University of Oswego. I had taught for a few years back a while ago. I was in my, I ran my own business for five or six years before I went to work for the city of Watertown as the Assistant Superintendent of Public Works. I oversaw 55-plus employees at the Newell Street Complex. I retired in 2022. I still do some construction work on the part-time basis. I was elected to three, five-year terms on the Watertown City School District Board of Education. I served four years as president of that body. I'm presently a member of the Jeff Lewis School, Jeff Lewis Board of Education. I served two years as president of that organization from '21 to '23. I currently sit on the City of Watertown Planning Commission for the last couple of years. In early 2000, I attended the Jefferson Leadership, which is sponsored by the Greater North Country Chamber of Commerce. I know how government works, especially city government, with my years there. With my experience, I hit the ground running. All head, lumen, curse, and my opponents have made, possibly with the exception of the present sitting councilwoman. I'm a good listener, and I feel constituent issues are a big part of the job. I'm a consensus builder. You know, a person has two ears and one mouth, and I think you should probably listen more than you talk. I can't promise no tax increases, but I can promise to keep any tax levy increase within reason as the city still has to function. Thanks.
Mr. Garabrant.
Hi, my name's Shane Garabrant. Thank you for having me tonight. For those of you who do not know me, I'm a lifelong Watertown resident, fourth generation at least. I grew up on Flower Ave. East. I graduated from IHC for high school, and then I went to Clarkson University where I majored in electrical engineering. I live over on Chestnut Street now. I'm married to my lovely wife, Bria. We have two daughters, age three and one. I'm 30 years old. I turned 31 just a couple of days before the primary. I'm a licensed electrical engineer. I work just down the hill on Van Duzee Street at Jade Stone Engineering, and I was a member of the hydro committee that convened from 2001 to 2000, or 2021 to 2022 to investigate ways to mitigate the expiration of the national-grade hydropower contract, a topic that I'm sure we'll dive into in greater detail. I decided to enter the race because I felt like I had something to offer the city and city council. It's very important to me to be able to raise my family in the city. That being said, I've been very concerned with the trajectory of Watertown. The past five years or so, our city faces a plethora of long-term issues: increasing budget deficits, rising taxes, youth retention, the homelessness issue, zombie homes, just to name a few. I would like to help the city address and hopefully resolve these issues so that we'll be a community on the upswing, a place for businesses to move into and young families to come raise, raise their children. I look forward to the opportunity to share my thoughts with all of you tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. And Mr. Burns.
Thanks, Jeff. My name is Colin Burns, and I'm running to be your next city councilman. Like to take a moment to thank WWNY, Jefferson Community College, and also the Center for Community Studies for hosting us tonight. I think it's a nice venue for us to have, and for me, I spent two years here, a long time ago now, so feels good to be back in the Sturt's Theater. I believe that we need a budget with little to no tax property increases. Now, there's a reason for that. As Mr. Garabrant said, he wants to have youth retained here. I'm a few years older than Mr. Garabrant, and when I first decided I was going to run, that was my platform. But I was speaking to people. It's the seniors we have to worry about. Those seniors that have lived here our entire life, their property is most likely paid off, so every single year when we have a property tax increase, that's additional money that they have to pay in a fixed income. What I propose is that we turn around, we pick a budgetary number, this is what it needs to be, and have the city manager come to us with a budget that is at 0%. Now, granted, I understand that there may be things that we need to purchase. If that's the case, come and justify it. Say, we're at a 2.5% increase because this department needs this because it's so aging, or the infrastructure is so aging. On that said, within that budget, we need to modestly improve infrastructure every single year because what we're doing, if we're not improving the infrastructure, we're kicking the can down the road and dealing with inflation. With that said, this is going to be a tough pill to swallow, but I think we need to go ahead and just build a new reservoir. Now, why do I believe that? Because every single year, we're patching up the reservoir on suggestions of $200,000 to $300,000. Now, when my grandfather passed away, WWNY was kind enough to make a DVD for some of our family members. That was back in the, 30 years ago. I hear an interview with my grandfather talking about the leaky reservoir. This is nothing new. This is something that just continuously we deal with, and how much water are we losing per day? What is the cost of the chemicals that we're losing per day? I think we just need to bite the bullet, and I think we need to build a new reservoir. Councilwoman Rogero brought up legal cannabis. Well, unfortunately, or fortunately, depending on where you sit on the fence, it's here to stay. It's not going away anywhere. What's unfortunate is we decided not to opt in, which is a quarter of a million dollars that we have not been receiving, at least a quarter of a million. I get that number from the town of Camilla. That's what they're, they're getting. That is money that we could be adding into the budget, less tax increase. Also, what it's done is it's allowed for all these convenience stores to open up, creating a black market where it's being sold to minors, it is untaxed, and ultimately, it's crime. So what we need to do is, and I would actually call on Councilwoman Rogero to put forth a resolution to get it done sooner rather than later, I think that's where we need to move with cannabis. You know, again, whether you like it or you don't like it, it's not going away, and frankly, we could use the money. Now, blight. Everybody wants to talk about blight. So about two years ago, I bought a foreclosure house on Flower Ave. West. I had been putting all of my money into that, trying to fix it up, getting it to the shape it needs to be, to bring up property values, not only for myself, but around me. Right next door, a gentleman ends up buying this apartment building. What I look at every single day is horrendous. There is a tarp filled with sheet rock that is completely soaked from the rain. There are screens with holes the size of volleyball's, and there are people that live in that house that do not uptake, keep uptake of the property. Now, when I say that, the owner is an absentee owner. So I understand that is number one, not number one, budget's number one, but I would say it's in the top three that we really need to handle because I literally, as I walk my dog, I have to look at all this. So I understand where that needs to be fixed.
If I could ask you to wrap up the opening statement here.
Yes. Real quick, why I entered this race was because I believe that being part of your community is serving your community, and that's why I'd like to be your next councilman.
Thank you. And we'll talk more about the issues that you're bringing up, okay? So there is a lot of talk about the past in this election cycle so far, and it really doesn't address the decisions that will come up for the next city council. It could be, it could be the meme page. It could be the golf course purchase of $3.4 million, which was two years ago. The fact of the matter is, the purchase that was made back then, if it wasn't made, that money would not be around today to solve tomorrow's problems. That money wouldn't be there. I don't think there's a lot to do with concentrating on that issue. That money would have spent on balancing budgets that have been tough in the last couple of years, or would have been used to invest, and the city would be in the same situation that it is right now. And we're going to talk budget to begin with. Reality is, it is your own council, if you're elected to council, that next year at this time, springtime, you'll see a budget with a proposed tax increase of 20%, 25%. And perhaps it could have job cuts because if you look at the deficits that I'm going to talk about, there aren't many ways to get the city back on track without making these tough decisions that people are talking about. So this year, we had to, before the budget was solved, about $3.5, $4 million of a deficit. Next year, Jim Mills, the controller, gave me numbers today, and the deficit is $8.9 million, double what we just solved, we being the city of Watertown, double. And we looked at a 20% tax increase to take care of this year's budget that was just taken care of, right? So now we're looking at double the deficit. It wouldn't probably get to this, but if it, if taxes had to solve that problem, you're looking at 60%, 70%, 80% of an increase in taxes. That's where the city is. That's what I want to concentrate on. There's little or no savings, and so I'd like to know, to begin with, Mr. Burns, I'll start with you and go on down through, simple answer, I'm going to keep people on time. You're going to be facing questions or decisions of either raising taxes, which you just said you didn't want to do, or you're cutting jobs. There isn't much more in the budget that can happen. The pencils aren't broad. They've gotten that, that deep in the budget. Are you raising taxes, or are you seeing fewer people working for the city of Watertown to balance the budget with $8.5 million, $8.9 million of a deficit next year?
Sure. Thanks, Jeff. I think what we need to do is take a hard look at what positions are open and can kind of go away through attrition. I don't want to say you want to cut a job, put somebody on unemployment. I think there is a lot of opportunities through attrition. Currently, right now, the city's looking for an arborist position. I don't really think that we need an arborist. I think there are enough volunteers that could step up to the plate, for that position at least. But frankly, no, I do not want a property tax increase. I understand we have a lot of legacy costs that are involved in the increased budget every single year, but we also have to get creative, as I mentioned with cannabis, to bring in new revenues and not just face, okay, this is what we have coming in. And frankly, one thing that very much concerns me is the sales tax because as we look, we have less and less Canadians coming over the border shop here in the north country.
Mr. Garabrant, same question, that those numbers are astounding and should worry someone that wants to get on council.
Yeah, absolutely. That's a major concern for, for our seniors, for our young people trying to raise families here. I think realistically, taxes are going to go up. I want to see, you know, we can't have annual double-digit tax rate increases like we've been seeing. It's just going to hammer our decreasing tax base. So I think realistically, yeah, you're going to have to make some tough decisions. You're going to have to cut spending as far as you can, and that might mean some jobs might have to be cut, and that's going to be a very tough decision to make. I think that's in the short term. In the long term, we need to look at, how can we expand our tax base? How can we bring in, you know, more businesses to the city? I know they say, you know, it's New York State, you can't bring business to New York State, but there are, there's a GE plant in Schenectady, there's a Corning Glass plant up in Canton that's expanding. I'd like to see and talk to those municipalities, how are they able to attract those businesses and attract those jobs and see if there's something that can be done for us to attract a business like that or leverage the fact that Micron's coming to the area? And so I think in the short term, yes, we need to cut spending as much as we can. In the long term, we need to look at how we can expand the tax base.
Mr. Monaco, you've gone through some budgets for the city of Watertown in your, in your tenure with the city?
Yeah, I've been, I probably sat in front of council 30 years, okay? And every year, it got worse and tougher. The services are going to have to be reduced, and as we reduce services, your, people are unfortunately, they've had to, I looked left and I looked right, and the people, whoever will get elected in November, got to have some strong will because there's going to have to be some reduction in force. It's just inevitable. You can cut a pickup truck for 65 grand or whatever, but I think three years ago, the council added 21 positions. I think they've cut, maybe lost three or four of them. One was in the comptrollers and every field, Public Works had two vacancies of the five they got. I think maybe lost one other one, I can't recall. But if you look at those 20 positions, and I think 78 of them might have been in the uniformed services, I think a salary of 75, $70,000 for a beginning patrolman or firefighter, and their, their New York State retirement contribution is 30%. You throw on a family health insurance, everybody, that $70,000 person costs 110,000, 120. You take that times 20, you hit the 2.4 million that Mr. Mills says is looking at next year's budget without any unplaced anything, just in salaries and benefit, a $2.4 million increase in the levy. So it's some tough decision to be made, and unfortunately, some, it's like a business. If the business is not, if they sell widgets and the widgets aren't selling, and you've got 50 people building them, and you only make, you only got, you only need 30 people to build those widgets. Unfortunately, you have to access the people.
Mr. Osborne, your thoughts on raising taxes or cutting jobs?
Yeah, I mean, 24% increase, 80% increase down the road is just, it's not sustainable. As everybody else has been indicating up here, we're going to have to make some serious and genuinely difficult decisions that nobody necessarily wants to make to include potentially cutting jobs. We're going to have to look at, look at everything. You know, I think we also just recently saw like an increase in some of our administrative wages that puts a hindrance on the, on the budget as well, and as what Mr. Monaco was alluding to, just the cost of labor, health insurance, retirement is all escalated as well. I mean, we really, really need to take a hard look at this, and you know, we should really be communicating with our state and federal partners to see what they can do to assist us or advocate for us, really. And you know, the state doesn't make things any easier when they, you know, consistently give us additional unfunded mandates. They always add things, but they never take anything away unless it is funded. So ultimately, yeah, I mean, we're going to have to make some really, really serious decisions coming up that nobody really has to make, but it's just not sustainable to have these double-digit tax increases year after year on the backs of our property owners and businesses. It just isn't.
Mr. Rogero, you've been there for some of these budgets, right? You've seen the numbers, you know how to do the, do the cutting, although some of the jobs that Mr. Monaco brought up, paid for, I think by federal funds, you were on, you were on the council at that time, but what do you think? Because you've gone through this, are you looking at cutting jobs, raising taxes?
Well, it's interesting that you say that because during, I think, one of our recent meetings, I did ask the city manager to let us know about any positions that would become open so that we can consider over the next year, should those, you know, be filled or not. And he basically accused me of putting on a hiring freeze. And somebody mentioned about the arborist, he's already hired that person. So I think because it takes a majority of people on council to get things done, I need people to back me up and say, hey, we want to look at these positions. So I brought it up, you know, kind of got overruled on that. But one thing I want to put up, put out there is that, you know, I was there during the time of COVID, and things were dire then, and we actually had to do layoffs. We went through each department and looked at what we had to do, and we did layoffs, and I believe that year, we may have even had a tax decrease. And that's part of the problem. Over the years, it's been said that if we were doing small incremental tax increases every year, whether it was 2%, 3%, we wouldn't have such a gap. But you run into where you got some that are just afraid to break the tax cap or don't want to have a tax increase because they feel it makes them look bad. But it's a necessary evil. I'm not suggesting double-digit increases, but I think if we were doing moderate increases every year, it certainly would soften the blow. But I will say that, you know, we did have a lot of layoffs during COVID, but after COVID, we were able to hire some positions back. And yeah, there were some in the DPW department, but nobody in DPW said, oh, we better, we And yeah, there were some in the DPW department, but nobody in DPW said, oh, we better, we better not accept those jobs, we better leave them vacant, because we don't know how the finances are going to be. We also went by our city manager and the city comptroller, in terms of what their advice was, and that it was fine to hire some of these people, because some of them were being hired back that were laid off. So, that is, that's the difference with that. But I think that, you know, we continually ask for grants to help pay for some of the things that the city needs. I think that bringing revenue in is important. One thing we don't hear about that much, or any discussion, is about the core development site, or the old Mercy site. You know, it would be wonderful if that happened. We have new construction going on on Clinton Street, that should at least bring in a little bit of revenue. So, we really have to be more actively involved in attracting business to Watertown, so that we can build on property tax and sales tax revenue. It makes a big difference, and I think that, I've been through it, I've lived through COVID, and had to make those difficult decisions on layoffs and job cuts, and I'm there for it.
Mr. Shore, you want to become a city council member, and the first decision may not be an easy one for you, so how do you come down on this?
No, well, first of all, when you have a proposed budget that you're actively working through to cut down things, I mentioned this the other day at a council meeting, I think it was a slap in the face to the city taxpayers to go through and do all that hard work, and then add a $100,000 item back into it. Another part, you know, something Councilman Kimball brought up the other day during a meeting, and Mr. Ruggiero had mentioned this, maybe we should have been increasing, and I know it's an unpopular thing for somebody who's running, who's never been in the job before to mention, but we probably should have been little increments and little increases here and there, because, you know, to be an ostrich, to put your head in the ground and not think that nothing else in this world increases, with, you know, insurance and all that, maybe we should have been doing that. As far as layoffs of personnel, and mostly public safety is a big part of our budget, right now, our city police department is operating on a really thin line. People have to be called in for overtime all the time, because they are short personnel. There's the focus that everybody's seen here in the city of an uptick of the New York State Police coming in to do vehicle and traffic to help out. As far as the fire department, national standards do dictate 15-man minimum, so there might not be, without a risk of public safety there, of positions that can be cut. You know, it's, there's other things, you know, it's the needs versus the wants. We need fresh water, we need infrastructure to be taken care of, the upkeep of that. We can't continue to make questionable decisions on wants of the golf course, you know, it was the golf course, and I misspoke myself the other night, it was 600 and some odd thousand dollars was the original, to obtain the land, and not a quarter million, as I had stated previously. But that was a want, and that was money that could have been better spent elsewhere. But, you know, another thing that was mentioned, you know, everybody states, oh, it's a bad thing to look in the past, and it really isn't, because, you know, we've gone through, we've made mistakes again here and now, that have also been made in the past. There was a mention of pools in that, back when Jim Brett was a councilperson. In regards to the pool, the indoor pool that's over where the city fire station is, he went back then and said, we can't afford it. And this is what we have with the zoo right now. Unfortunately, it's nice that we have these things, but back then, the city couldn't afford it. The city gave it to the conservancy, it was told back to the conservancy then. We can't afford it, we'll give it to you, we let you run it, do not come back to the city and ask for money. And yet, that has been repeatedly happening. And, you know, it's, again, we got to look more at the needs of the city, and taking care of the existing infrastructure, rather than the wants.
Mr. Velasquez.
Definitely. So, one of the perks of going last is, I'm sure many of you witnessed me writing rather aggressively a minute ago, so, the councilwoman alluded to the council majority, that's honestly part of the problem, the taxpayers over the past five years have been faced with a council majority that has a spending addiction. And it's not even a spending addiction, it's misguided priorities. You know, I like pools, and I like golf courses, I'm not going to beat the horse half-dead here, but, you know, we spent $7 million between a golf course and redoing a pool, and someone mentioned the fact that that money would have been used to plug budget deficits. That's exactly it. That $7 million could have been $7 million less that the taxpayers had to pay into the system. That money could have been used to offset future budget deficits.
But sir, let me just interrupt, because a lot of that money would already be spent. That was the point that I was making, is a lot of that's already spent. You're in the same position today, even if that money, it's gone.
We're in the same position, but that's still $7 million that would have been used to offset current tax rate increases. Growing our city's economy, it's quite difficult, when we're facing a declining population and a declining tax base. We need to pursue responsible spending and address quality of life issues. So, we need to show that Watertown is open for business. That includes, you know, reaching out, we have Micron going in 60 miles down the road. Watertown stands to be a sleeper community. We stand to see a lot of tech investment in the area. Someone up here mentioned that, you know, we have Corning Glass and companies like that. We absolutely should be marketing Watertown as an affordable, attractive place to live. A few other thoughts. So, we should have raised taxes slightly, and, you know, measured over the past five years. There were several years with no tax rate increase. You know, that kind of goes back to the council majority's short-sighted priorities, and hesitation to engage in long-term fiscal planning. Another thing I heard about today is, I remember Mr. Dougherty spoke at Privilege on the floor a few months back, with a proposal for 24-hour shifts in the fire department, and I guess that's something the union is interested in. That saves, you know, we're talking cannabis, which I'll go on the record as saying, I'm open to that idea, especially if it brings revenue into the city. But another thing is, if the fire department is supporting 24-hour shifts, that saves $250,000 a year in overtime costs, as well as, you know, it really could have saved an administrative fire captain position, which we absolutely need to take a look at positions. I'm willing to be the unpopular guy in the room, and someone mentioned a hiring freeze, there would be a hiring freeze, I would be open to that. The arborist, we did hire an arborist. Do we need one? Well, some might disagree, I don't think so. You know, we're facing some tough times in the next several years. I think we need to trim the size of city government, and spend responsibly, and plan for the future. That doesn't mean looking at next year's budget, that means looking at 20, 30, when we lose the hydro revenue. That's $5 million, too.
In which the deficit does grow to $13.7 million, excuse me, at that time. One way to help with the city of Watertown, I'm going to keep you guys more on time, please, but one way to help in terms of revenue is blight. A few of you have mentioned blight. Mr. Velasquez, I'll start on your end. What is your idea, and again, I'm trying to be quick here, I want to cover as many things as we can, but what is your idea to take care of blight? Because you get a house that's going to be better and worth more, more taxes are then put into the pot, right? So, or is blight not an issue for you? I know that answer, but I'll just, either way, however you want to answer it.
So, blight's absolutely an issue that is of massive importance to me, so I am proposing, and other candidates have their own ideas, you know, blight is something that I'm sure everyone at this table cares about. If elected, I plan to propose an anti-blight ordinance. I've been doing some research on other municipalities that have similar laws on the books. This ordinance has been implemented in other cities. It's designed to target properties that have fallen into disrepair, and are contributing to blight and negative public safety outcomes. So these blighted properties, you know, as you guys, as everyone's well aware, they lead to less attractive neighborhoods, increased crime, elevated fire risk, as we saw with the fire on Main Ave a few months ago, lower property values, they often encourage squatters and illicit drug activity. This makes our neighborhoods less safe, and contributes to a negative perception that, I feel, clouds our city. Only onto New York is a really good example of a municipality that passed a similar law. The law created a point system, where more egregious violations were assigned a higher number of points. The property is then deemed blighted, once it reaches a certain number of points. This allows, you know, code enforcement to assign more strict fines. This law would allow for these property owners to engage in, or agree to, what they call a restoration agreement. So this agreement outlines rather aggressive repair timelines, and items to be addressed. You know, but most importantly, it encourages collaboration. Our community, along with a spending problem, we have a collaboration problem. We need to maintain open lines of communication. I know that the city has begun to create a list of these abandoned or vacant properties. I think this is an excellent start, and actually would work hand-in-hand with the anti-blight law I'm proposing. Finally, you know, by cleaning up our city, and ensuring a high-quality and increasing housing stock, you know, that would put downward pressure on rents, that would also hopefully help to begin to address the homelessness crisis.
And, Mr. Shore, and I'll just mention that with Jefferson Community College and the Center for Community Studies, people care about this. In a most recent study done by the center, the question was, do you agree or disagree that local government should put more effort into taking care of vacant property? Pretty much three out of every four people are for taking care of blighted property.
They should, and you've got, you know, mentioned ordinances, and they should probably come up with more ordinances. What a lot of people are aware of, there's a lot of absentee landlords here in the city that own these properties. And I believe, you know, should have heavier enforcement, you know, against those individuals. The only problem is with that, is that some of them may just end up going and abandoning the property outright, and the city might end up, unfortunately, owning that property and, without the funds to rehabilitate that property, the property would get condemned and end up still costing the money in regards to demolition. But it is a problem, you know, the property owners have got to take more responsibility, the city's got to be a little more heavy-handed in it. You know, as was mentioned, because it raises crime in the area, I have an issue right now with a condemned property next door to me, and people with drug issues and mental health issues that keep coming in and out of the area and the neighborhood. And it does, it does put a blight in the neighborhood, and people are getting fed up with it, such as myself. Excuse me. I write too small. You know, like I said before, it's just got to be a little more heavier-handed enforcement and ordinances to take care of it. I do realize that, you know, there's always so much that the code enforcement office can do, but it needs to be done.
Mr. Ruggiero, keeping taxes lower can make people invest in their home, right? So, I mean, it's kind of a double-edged thing here, but what do you think about blight?
Well, it, obviously, it does exist. I have said it before, but unfortunately, the codes office has been more reactive than proactive, and they rely on residents to call in blighted properties, and then they will go and send the letters that they have to send. But the problem is, if they don't know about it, they don't do anything. However, I've called in myself, while being on city council, two different properties, and reported it directly to code enforcement, and to this day, they still are there, there still have not been any improvements. And obviously, I think that's an internal issue to deal with, but it does make a difference when you have properties that are being fixed up, and it shows, you see some neighborhoods where one house after another are making improvements, and it makes that neighborhood turn around. There's some investors in this city that actually do that, and that really helps. We do have a vacant home registry, and I think that it needs more teeth in that, to be able to go after these people that continue to neglect their properties. We have one on, boy, on the south side of the city, that they have issues, but they pay their taxes, they don't mow it, the city mows it, adds it to the tax bill, it gets paid. It's an absentee, you know, homeowner, that really isn't taking care of anything, but codes has done everything they can with it. So, you know, we have those types of properties, too. But we do need to do more, and I think that we have to get codes to be more proactive, we also have to inform the residents how to make those complaints, and how to have them call in. But I did want to go back to, you know, we were talking about Micron and so forth, Jefferson County and the JCIDA have become a team with an agency in Syracuse, working diligently on advertising Jefferson County and the city of Watertown, to try to get people up here, whether it's tourism, whether it's for housing. So there is a collaboration there, and I'm hoping that they'll be successful.
Mr. Osborne, what's the problem with blight in the city?
Yeah, quite frankly, I think it's kind of a pandemic at the moment. You know, the last figure I saw was 232 abandoned houses, I think that number peaked up to 240. So, it's not a problem that's going to go away anytime soon. Similar to what Anthony was kind of alluding to, I had a proposal for a nuisance abatement law, kind of constructed after what the city of Oswego implemented back in 2020. Basically, what it does, it targets abandoned properties, blighted homes that have frequent criminal issues, as well as chronic code violations. It consists of a board with, that contains like law enforcement, code enforcement officer, regular residents of the city, city council member, I mean, we could tailor it any way you want to, that fits our needs here. And I agree with the councilwoman, too, I think codes has been more reactive, and more complaint-based, I think that's kind of the formula right now, but it does need to be more proactive. And also, I don't, I think they also selectively enforce the code, depending on the complaint. So, that's another thing that's kind of problematic, but yeah, I mean, it's something that we genuinely need to address, it's affecting neighborhoods all over the city. I've talked to multiple people in the city where they just have random abandoned houses everywhere, and it's affecting their quality of life. So it's something we definitely need to address ASAP.
Mr. Monaco, blight.
It's, yeah, it's there. When I was out getting petitioning back in March, I was on North Hamilton Street, and I was at a home, and the people, and they'd lived there 50-plus years in their home, and they were thinking about, they were thinking, maybe we may end up, we not stay here, we like to stay in Watertown, we may end up in some kind of an assisted living, or apartments, or whatever, they were getting harder to maintain their property, but they go look across the street. In January 2024, we had, there was a very large windstorm, lost power in the county and in the city, and a large maple tree, I mean, a large one, probably 40 inches or better across, came down and went, split this house in half, right across from these folks' house. And they go, the tree laid in there until probably this winter, and as of today, the house is still split in half, with two walls going, the outside walls going this way, they go, I'd like to get up every day and look at that. I go, I probably wouldn't like it after a while. We'd like to, we're thinking about selling our house, but who's going to buy the place with this across the street? I had sent, you know, I had, having worked for the city, I don't want to use the word connections, but I sent an email off to codes, and I got a response back from the city manager. Codes had sent something to the manager, the manager forwarded their response, some of his response in there, well, this was in March, and we're working on that presently. Well, we probably are working on it, but the house still looks terrible. It wouldn't take too much for an engineer, structural engineer, to go, yep, it should come down, because there's no fix to it.
So where's the problem lie?
Problem lies in, probably, probably will end up in court. And the problem lies in regulations, and people, you know, man's home is his castle, and I assume they've been working on it. Now, they may have it in the attorney's hand, Mr. Ruggiero may know something about that, that I don't, but it's been a year and a half, come on, let's get this, let's get this thing knocked down. I'm assuming there was, I don't know, but I'm assuming there was insurance on the property. There may not have been, and if there was insurance, that would obviously cover some of the cost. So I think it's a city issue that they need to be, like everybody has said, let's get moving on this stuff.
The assessment level, Mr. Gerber, and I think you've brought this up, that $9 million, the city lost $9 million in assessed value, and that means less, fewer taxes coming in. So what is your, you've identified the problem, how do you fix it as a city council member?
Yeah, and it's a nationwide problem, it's not a new problem, it's been here at least a decade. I think in the immediate future, we, I think, speaking with people... least a decade. I think in the immediate future, we, I think, speaking with people, going door to door, what you hear is a frustration that codes department almost, their priorities seem focused more on, given people get a hard time for trying to improve their properties, for trying to get, you know, permits for fencing and stuff like that. I think more people would like to see them go after these non-compliant homes and enforce, you know, the codes that already exist. I mean, I walk my dog all winter and there's, there's houses that they don't shovel the entire, entire winter. You're walking in the road. It's a safety concern. I think codes needs to be enforced there. I think in the long term, we need to, you know, investigate, is there a way to incentivize developers or flippers to take a house and, and, you know, fix it up and see if we can incentivize them with, you know, we won't raise your assessment, we won't, we'll keep your tax rate low for a certain amount of time. I'd also like to see, you know, there's, there's areas in the country, since this is a nationwide issue, that have had some success with this. You know, I've done a little research and Youngstown, Ohio's had, had some luck putting pressure on, on banks to speed up the foreclosure process. Rochester, New York's worked with, with Monroe County to develop a database and a resource center to help address this issue. And then New Haven, Connecticut, they've passed legislation that puts some pressure on some of these absentee landlords. So I think we need, we don't necessarily need to reinvent the wheel, but we need to reemphasize codes that are already there and then look at what other communities have done that have had success.
And Mr. Burns, you brought up the, this in your opening statements, but give us a little bit more if you would.
Yes, sure. So first of all, I think that everybody's made some very good points on this subject. Look at the house on Coffeen Street where that dead body was found. I mean, that, that looks like the kind of house that teenagers in a horror movie decide to go in and explore and they never make it out. Why is that still, I mean, it's condemned, but why has nothing been done on it? So what, to what you're saying, I called codes probably about a year ago. There's a dilapidated shed that's over my property line. And the owner, he's an absentee owner of the apartment building next door. I showed him, I gave him a survey of the property, told him I would walk with the surveyor's wheel to show him that it's over my property line. He refuses to believe us. So I called codes. And they said, unfortunately, Mr. Burns, there's nothing we can do for you because there was no permit for that shed. So we don't know when it was built. So now where I am is either I have to take them to the Supreme Court of New York State, represent myself, and it's going to cost me roughly $500, or I keep this shed on my property. So I've done some research. The codes department is not in the city charter. We could rework that into a zoning department, don't have to change staff, change the name, change the purpose of the department and give them the authority to say, okay, well, here's an ordinance. Any shed that's over a property line has to be moved. Not, oh, well, it might've been grandfathered and we got to look at this, we have to look at that. Creating a zoning department would give all the authority needed to speed up the process to take care of this blight.
The next two questions, I'd just like to have rapid fire. I'd just like an answer. And the first one can, and then we're going to get into hydro. That's why I'm doing the next two just as quick. The first one with the fire department. Often in past councils, Watertown has been taking on the fire department. When it comes to minimum staffing, it's an expensive part, right? Public safety in the budget is, is number one in terms of where money goes. And in the past, there's been that, that battle of whether the minimum staffing needs to be there or if you should take it on as a city council member. So I'm going to go down the line, starting with Mr. Burns. But with the fire department and the minimum staffing clause, do you take it on or do you leave it be? And if you can give me that answer, and then if, if an audience member has a question, they want an explanation later on, they'll come to you. They'll ask you for it. But do you take it on or do you leave it be when it comes to minimum staffing at the fire department?
So with minimum staffing, I think the biggest expense that we have with the fire department and much like the police department is overtime, not necessarily the staffing laws.
So you're, you're saying leave it be?
Right. Especially as Mr. Schur said, I mean, it's, it's a national policy.
Okay. So Mr. Gerber, take it on or leave it be?
I think right now you, you leave it be. However, you know, with, with the deficits that you're mentioning in the long term, there, anything has to be on the table at some point, I think.
Mr. Monaco.
Minimum Manning's been in for, I tried to check with one of the older fire chiefs, been in probably 40 years. It's, it's kind of a model that you'd like to see to get rid of, but you're probably going to have to try to, if you want to get rid of it, you have to try to negotiate it out of the contract. The city went through, I don't know, eight, nine, it depends on what number you listen to, back a few years ago, all the way to the Court of Appeals and Law. So it's going to have to, if the council so wants to get rid of it, it's got to probably be tried and negotiated.
What if you're the councilman? What if you're the council member? Do you take it on or do you leave it be?
I have to see, I'll probably take it on.
Okay. All right.
As in as a negotiation.
Sure. Yeah, there's more to the answer. I'm just trying to get the, the basis here. Mr. Osborne, take it on or leave it be?
Well, I'm all for making any departments more cost-effective or efficient, including the fire department, but not if it's going to compromise public safety.
Ms. Reggio, take it on or leave it be?
Well, I, I agree with what Mr. Osborne said, but you have to leave it be because the city spent a million dollars on fighting the fire department and lost at the highest court in New York State regarding minimum Manning. They can't touch it. The only way you can touch it is if you negotiate it in the contract. There's, we tried three years ago with their contract and that failed. But that's the only way you can do it. And why bother spending another million dollars when we already know what the answer is?
Mr. Schur, take it on or leave it be?
Leave it be. Again, NFPA standards for minimum Manning. And as Ms. Reggio has stated that, you know, it's cost us money over the years. It shouldn't even be part of the negotiation process anymore because of the, the court rulings. And again, it's, it's a public safety issue.
Mr. Velasquez, take it on or leave it be?
For the time being, leave it be. Honestly, so I want less litigation in the city and more collaboration. It was previously alluded to, the city did spend a lot of money on the cost of litigation. Let's work with the union. You know, there has to be some give and take here. Both sides cannot get completely what they want all the time. Work with them primarily to focus on operational efficiency.
And the negotiations are at an impasse right now between the two sides. The next one that I'd like a yes or no on, and it's the pot shops, we've talked about it. Do you legalize it in the city? Allow it to be sold in the city? It does generate some money, $240,000 is the number from the town of Pemilia. $240,000 to the good when you're looking at eight and a half million dollars down. Doesn't make, doesn't move the needle too much. But where do you stand on it? I'll start on the very end with Mr. Velasquez. You already kind of mentioned it, but I'll give you the shot at it anyway. Pot shops, in the city or out?
In the city. I find it kind of ironic. They built within a stone's throw from the city to begin with.
Mr. Schur.
I would rather, and my continual answer on this, regardless of my personal feelings, I think it should go to a public referendum and let the city itself decide.
Ms. Reggio.
Yes.
In the city?
Yes.
Mr. Burns asked you to set up a resolution beforehand, get it done sooner. Is that something you're considering?
I certainly would look at my colleagues and see if we have three votes to do it, then definitely look at it. And, you know, if I could just add, the reason why we opted out in the first place was, once you opt in to sell it, you can never opt out. And the state did not have anything in place, no regulations, no nothing. It was so unknown. We felt it was safe to opt out until we knew more. So I think now's the time.
That's good information, actually. Thank you for sharing that. Mr. Osborne?
I would be willing to explore as a, as a option.
Mr. Monaco.
It's got to go along with Mr. Osborne. It's, it's, you can't go in large all about smelling it. So if somebody's buying it someplace, might as well have a legal shop and get something out of it. Unfortunately, you can't have a public referendum under New York State law, city law.
Mr. Gerber.
I guess I'm not a firm yes or no either way. I, the revenue would be nice. I'd like to see those figures closer. I, my concern would be it'd have to be very strategically located. I wouldn't want one in my neighborhood. I'm sure there's quite a few businesses that wouldn't want one next door to them. So I think it needs further, it's more than a yes or no answer. It needs further exploration, I believe.
Mr. Burns, I know your answer on it. You've already said it, but go ahead.
Yes. Shane, just to answer that, OCM does have regulations on where they can be. They would not be in your residential neighborhood. They would not be in my residential neighborhood. The other thing I would like to ask Jeff, if we could call it a dispensary instead of a pot shop?
Absolutely.
Give it a negative notation.
Yep, I agree. That's fine. Yep, dispensary is fine. Thank you for that clarification. Let's talk about hydro on, because that is something that is going to come up to, to an end, right? You have that contract coming due with National Grid, roughly $6 million a year right now. The city can't lose money really. It should be keeping as much as it can. I want, this could, this could take days to talk about. I'd, I'd rather be fairly quick on this. Mr. Burns, I'll start with you. Where I'll go with this is that Mr. Olney, who's not part of this here tonight, as a write-in candidate, does have a plan, does have an idea of some way, somehow, which was actually in that hydro study and the committee itself. What do you think of that plan? Or do you have something else of where an answer to the city of Watertown and that hydro plant's an asset that soon is not going to be giving as much money as it is right now?
Sure. So my stance on the hydro is, I think it's great that we have the recommendations that we have as is. I do believe that we need to continue to look at municipal for a few reasons. When we opted into this program with Niagara Mohawk at the time, they wanted to keep us from municipal and I think there's a reason behind that. In addition, with being a municipal energy supplier, we would also be able to attract new businesses. City of Watertown is companies that work in AI and cryptocurrency, require the extreme cooling and also heating up of, they can generate off of the river, basically. So I think there are opportunities to attract business. I understand there may be some additional startup costs, but I think there's an opportunity to bring new businesses in. Up in Messina, they have these, there's a crypto company that mines there and brings in millions of dollars a day with cargo containers just completely full of computers. But they need that municipal energy to be able to cool the computers down and keep them to the point where they can continue to mine. So that's, I think it's, I think what we need to do is rather than continue to push it down the road because frankly, we had the plan roughly, or the five recommendations two years ago. We need to just get on it and start working on it.
Mr. Gerber, you were on that, on that committee and the recommendations came out a bit ago. Nothing really moved on. Is that frustrating to you? And where do you stand on, on what's the best solution?
Yeah, it was definitely frustrating. It's one of the, the reasons, you know, I entered the race. And, and yeah, so I, I think the recommended option was, was basically that we sell our various power products right to the New York ISO, which is the organization that runs the state electrical grid. We'd bring in revenue that way. We'd then buy wholesale power through a third party that we then sell to the city residents who opt in at a discounted rate. Mr. Olney's plan, I haven't been able to read through it. I believe his is basically a piece of that, of buying the power wholesale. I do, the projections I've heard, I think are largely overscaled. I do believe also, I haven't, without reading the report, it seems that he'd want to put the operation rigor under the, under the city government, which would add cost for us. In terms of municipal power, that was not recommended due to, you know, legal fees, startup costs. It'd be, you know, $500,000 a year roughly to hire six to eight more people to, to operate it. In terms of using municipal to attract business, you're only going to use that to attract business if you're having, if you're charging them below market rates. So that's not a way to generate, make up the revenue that we're losing. It's a way to potentially bring in more tax money, I guess, that way. And, and also if we're, we're talking about selling the power generated to those businesses, I don't believe it's enough power to maybe get one business. It's not, and you could probably power a dozen city buildings off of it. But in the world of electrification, the capacity isn't, isn't quite there. So yeah, I would go with the recommended option. It was put together by a consultant with, with 30 years experience in this industry specifically. And that's something, yeah, that I'd like to spearhead if I'm elected to council.
Mr. Monaco, what do you think about hydro? Where do we go?
I requested Mr. Olney's, his plan and pretty voluminous and kind of difficult to get, to get through. I think, I think it's worth looking at and also what Shane had just mentioned. So there's two things. Olney's plan might be a little expensive on the front end and I don't know, I haven't, I didn't sit down with a calculator and go through all his numbers. He's talked, his numbers are up and down and here and there. And not being critical of that, just saying it was difficult to kind of follow. But one of the two plans, we've got to do something to at least, you know, he says we can make more. The plan that's made, that Shane's talking about, it probably would maybe cut, maybe only cut the city's loss by 50%, give or take. I mean, so we got to look at one of the two, whichever way to go.
Mr. Osborne?
Yeah, I tend to kind of lean a little bit more towards Mr. Gerber's idea here and just like really trying to delve into those options. We should have done it yesterday, but we got to work on it today. I don't know, I mean, this was an issue that was brought up when I ran in 2015 and we've been kicking, kicking the can down the road on this thing for the last 10 years. I don't know why we haven't had discussions with National Grid to kind of prepare us once the contract ends. But I mean, we're, we're getting right to the finish line here and we really need to start building some of the framework and figuring out what we need to do moving forward. In regards to municipal, I just, I don't think it's entirely feasible at this time. I mean, I don't, I don't think we have the apparatus to handle every, all that. Also, I don't think we have the expertise to handle that as well. And there's, as Mr. Gerber was kind of touching upon, we just don't have the funds to kind of go in that direction at the moment.
Ms. Reggio.
Well, I know that the hydro consultant, Skip Trimble, was very helpful with, I think, the hydro committee, but also going through the different options. And I, in reading a little bit and actually talking to Mr. Olney about what he was suggesting, he was talking about the city setting up an electric service company and that he said that Watertown would be like one of maybe only a couple cities in the whole state that could do this and still bring in revenue now instead of waiting for the falloff. And what I think that we need to do is we need to take his report and send it to Skip Trimble and have him review it and say, can this be done? I know Mr. Olney has said, said that he called, I think, the public service commissioner, I think, to talk about this. And they were saying what to do and certain things were doable. And the way it translated to me was, you basically would be having people use what they're using, but they would be paying a delivery fee to the city rather than National Grid. So there's a lot to it. I know it was, it was very lengthy and I think we really have to have more about it. And I've asked for several months for the city manager to do another hydro work session. He's trying to wait until we get information back from the DEC on their inspection. And I've asked numerous times since I've been on council with all the mayors that we've had, how come we have not sat down with National Grid? How do we make that happen? Has anybody even asked National Grid? And the answer I got was, no, they have not asked them, would they continue at whatever rate? That's the answer that we need. And I think it's, it's sad that I keep asking that. And, you know, we got to push our people to, to make it happen. And, you know, because we need those answers. Because what if we find out that they say, yes, we still want to continue? Okay. What's the lower rate they're going to want? Because we know they're not going to pay what we're getting now. So there certainly is more to do with it. But I think with Cliff's plan, we need to send it to Skip Trimble, let him review it and make his recommendations.
Mr. Schur, hydro?
Now, Mr. Gerber gave me a little bit of extra information that I had not had. But in regards to their, if we could market the Mercy site and bring in something like a crypto or data center and be able to sell that electricity for the city to them. But as he mentioned, he said we might not be able to make as much money as we'd like to on it. But as far as the municipal power to power things here in the city, the river does not have the cubic feet per minute to produce the power. We can't build anything large enough here because we don't have, we own islands. The islands that we own, that's great. If you were to build on that, the only problem is we can't put a toe in the water without having to be able to get into a contract with National Grid or Brookfield Power because they own what's called the intake structures around those islands. So you'd be getting back into contracts with those, those entities. You know, it just, it's, it's a hard question to answer to what to do with it and with all these, these barricades that are up around it. So.
Mr. Velasquez.
Yes. So after reading Mr. Trimble's report, so first, before committing to an actual hydro idea or hydro plan, I'd honestly want to see the committee or a new iteration of the committee read regularly. I know the councilwoman said that they've been pushing for a hydro work session. It seems kind of odd that now it's an election year and we're again talking about hydro. Mr. Osborne? Mr. Osborne said we've been talking about it since 2015, that checks out. My current idea that I'm in favor of, as many at the table alluded to, is, you know, participating in the residential and wholesale market and selling some of the electricity back to city residents at a discounted rate. I feel that that would kind of help to offset some of our budget issues and especially help some of the residents out. Someone else mentioned the fact that the output from the river is not necessarily enough to power a lot of the municipal buildings. AI is an intriguing idea, but I don't know if that's feasible at the moment. I'd like to see more info, info on that, to be honest.
Jeff, can I add one more?
Sure.
Detail? I just wanted to also clarify, we're, we're currently making 30 cents a kilowatt hour off of, off of that deal. The market rate is three to five cents a kilowatt hour. I believe last month, the city manager did mention that they had had some discussions with National Grid about renegotiating the contract, and, and they're, they're not interested. They, they mispredicted the market, basically. They thought the price of electricity would continuously rise, and that's not what happened. So they, they have no interest in continuing on with the deal.
We're going to take a break, and everyone can stay in their seats, please, but we'll take a break because I want to get questions from our back, from our back table, take a look at those, but it'll just be a two-minute break, so we're going to do that here quickly. We'll be back to talk about the zoo, but also some questions from the audience and, and from ones that we've gotten online as well. So with that, we'll take a quick break, and we will be back here in a couple of moments. All right, and we're back here, live at WWNYTV.com, as we continue our town hall forum here with the candidates running for Watertown City Council. Thanks to JCC and the Center for Community Studies for helping us here and doing the, the table and the, the town hall forum. So let's talk about the zoo, and then I'll get into some questions that are here from some audience members. The zoo, definitely a hot topic in terms of funding it. My question, and I'll start, who did I start with the last? I forget, was it on the end? It was with you? So I'll go down to Mr. Velasquez, thank you. I'd like to know the future of the zoo, how do you see it, you know, and, and funding it? But I'm also interested in, in when, when was the last time that you visited the zoo? And then answer the question, how do you view the zoo moving forward and funding it?
Well, so, it's funny you ask me that, because the last time I visited the zoo was actually a few weeks ago. I recently sat down with Dr. Erwin at the zoo, you know, during the budget talks. It's worth listening to your constituents, and when you have rooms full, room full of people, or a whole room full of people, show up and advocate for something they're extremely passionate, passionate about, you know, it's worth listening to them. So we had a conversation regarding the viability of the zoo. You know, to my knowledge, I'm the only candidate on this stage who recently took a trip to the zoo to have this conversation. I honestly believe that demonstrates my commitment to collaborating with community partners. I don't see the zoo's funding requests, per their business plan, as realistic at the amount that they were asking for. I'm pleased that we were able to allocate something to them. I'd like to speak directly to the folks who did speak in, in support of the zoo. I heard you. It's one of those things that I wanted to make sure that people felt heard. I wanted to show people that I'm willing to have a tough conversation. I also don't want to see the zoo given, you know, X amount of dollars into perpetuity. I have read the mayor's plan. I'm not ready to fully endorse that plan. I think it's worth having a conversation. There's elements of that plan that I know the zoo is already doing, but there's also elements of that plan that might be willing to, you know, save, or that might be able to save some money. I'd love to see the projected costs, or costs of the mayor's plan versus the cost of the zoo subsidy and kind of balance it out that way. See which one makes the most sense for city taxpayers. And going off of that, not trying to evoke my work, but I'm looking forward to a field trip to the zoo in the next week, actually.
Mr. Schur, same question. The last time that you were up at the zoo, and you've kind of shared your opinion already about the facility, but if you could expand on that, and, and I believe that your stance is that it, that it should not get any more funding, right?
It's, it's been a long time. It's been over 10 years since the last I've been up there. I would like to thank Mr. Erwin for what he's been trying to do and what he has been doing. Again, you know, this has been 35 years, and we can't afford it. Obviously, our budget preparers are saying we can't afford it, and yet they still find a way to, to make a donation, so to speak, towards it. Again, with all the issues that we've got coming up, it's, it's just not feasible for the city to continue. I would like to, to continue going over the mayor's plan for the reimagining of it, but I just don't see the city, especially within the next five years of, of being able to, to do anything to help out any further.
Ms. Ruggiero, same question?
Yes. I actually, I've, I've had numerous conversations probably over the last couple of years with Dr. Erwin, and he's always been available to answer my questions. I've toured the property several times, and actually, I was up to see the Wolverine display. So, you know, I'm very familiar with what's there. The thing is, the city does own the property, and if, if the zoo is not there, obviously the city's going to be responsible for all of that. They were asking 375,000 from the city and from the county. The city, you know, majority agreed on 100,000. I understand that the county had a resolution for 375,000, but there might, there may be people that, on the Board of Legislators that are willing to offer less. I would like to see if there's a way to, that they would revisit that and maybe come up with a different amount for them. I know that they have increased their memberships. Their events tend to be more successful now, and they certainly have a wonderful group of members and volunteers that we have seen at the council meetings, and they have come to express their concerns or what they're fond of the most, especially when you hear it from the kids, that's very meaningful. I understand, you know, people are looking at it like, oh, we keep throwing money at it. But I think this past year, I'm hoping that maybe it was somewhat of a turning point for them because they did increase their memberships quite a bit, and I, I would like to see what they, you know, what more can they do, but also to continue working with the county to see if they can agree on some, some dollar amount that's less than 375,000. As far as the reimagining of the plant, of the zoo, I understand it, there's, you know, it mentions keeping some of the small animals in there, making it more of a nature center, but it's still, it's going to take people to run it, people to care for the animals, vet bills, food bills, and so forth, and I'm wondering if that's going to be more than 100,000 that we're giving the zoo now. So it's food for thought. Thank you.
Mr. Osborne, last time you were up at the zoo, and your thoughts of the future of it?
Last time I was up at the zoo? Very, very long time ago. But nonetheless, I mean, I, I still feel that the zoo is the cornerstone of the park and, and has been for, in the community for years. But it's also evident that the conservancy has been running into some financial issues lately. I mean, I just don't think we can fund six-figure requests and subsidies year after year. I think there needs to be a little bit more transparency on the conservancy side when it comes to the zoo. And I also think there needs to be more oversight on the city end when it comes to the zoo. I think the city needs to be able to make some assessments to determine and explore what the options are for the future of the, of the zoo.
Mr. Monaco, same question. Last time up there and?
It's been a while, my wife and grandkids frequent, well, when they're here, they live out, out of town, they golf. They like it, and it's unfortunate that the situation is what it is. When I worked for the city in public works, we sort of oversaw parks and recreation for a while, back in the, oh, I guess it was in the 90s, in the early 2000s. It was a line item, it was like $30,000, something to that effect, and there was money come out of there, and if, if the director's house needed a water heater or whatever, something needed to be repaired, that money, and it just sort of, everything was going good. It was a big turnover in directors, and, but I don't think the city can sustain, given 100,000, as a couple of the folks here have said. I did read the mayor's plan, I think it's worth looking at, but there was no real dollar figure in her plan, but it, conceptually, it may work with it. And Doug said, it's, the park is just a wonderful, wonderful, complex, many cities would wish they had that, and, you know, it's just a great place, and, but I don't think they can, the way things are going in the next five years, I don't think they can throw another half a million dollars, at 100 grand a year for the next five years at the, to the conservancy unless they find some money somehow.
Mr. Gerbrandt, last time up there, and, and thoughts for the future of the zoo?
Yeah, last time I was up there was Memorial Day, actually. Brought the, my girls up there, me and my wife did, saw a couple bears playing together. I was more excited than my three-year-old. And so, I, but long-term, I don't think, as we've talked about on the, the fiscal future of the city, I don't believe we're in a position to be able to give hundreds of thousands of dollars year over year. It's, it's not sustainable. I do have questions. I, I know personally someone that had been on the board, you know, probably 10, 15 years ago, he said when he left the board, they had money. I'm just, and, and it wasn't, when I was a kid, it was, you saw signs constantly of future exhibit of this, and it was future exhibit of that, it was constantly expanding. I'd just like to know, you know, what changed? I do feel like a lot of the Q and A that's kind of happened has been either through the media or through privilege of the floor. I'd like to have a, a work session where the, the director of the zoo and the conservancy, they came in, they answered their ques, answered some questions, opened their books. I'd like to know, you know, how many grants have they applied to? How many private businesses have they applied to? And, and if there's ways that the city can help other than just financial handouts, essentially. I, I do think we could try to collaborate with the county and see either if they'd be willing to, to put in a little bit more, or at least help market the zoo to, you know, outside of just city residents. I, I, we're members of the zoo, I'd be very disappointed if it, if it closed, but I also don't think that we're in a position where we could, you know, keep handing money over year over year.
Mr. Burns, same question. Last time up there, and future of the zoo?
So my last time that I was at the zoo was 12 years ago, when there was a dedication of my grandfather's name. I think that the current, current team at the zoo is, is doing everything they can to make it as viable as possible, but I think we unfortunately are at a place where it never will be. I was speaking with somebody that has a, a previous past in running zoos, and explaining the situation to them, they responded to me, they missed the boat by not having endowments. If you're a zoo and you don't have endowments, you are not going to make it in 2025 or farther on, on down the road. I think unfortunately, there were executive directors of the zoo that, as Mr. Gerbrandt said, at one point, there was good money. I think that they, they overinflated the staff. I think that they spent the money, they didn't do a good job of fundraising, setting up the endowments, and this is where we are now. So I fully endorse the, the mayor's plan. I understand there's no dollars associated with it, but I think it's a good starting point, and I think that we then, as a city, could make the park one homogeneous city asset.
One of the questions from the audience talks about the image of the city of Watertown and, and the negative image that it has, their opinion. What is something that you would do? Do you agree with that? And what is one thing that you would try to do to improve the image of the city of Watertown? Not only for people maybe to move into the city, but maybe to work for the city as well, right? Because you want to attract good employees, but if the morale isn't there, it could, it could be an issue right now. In fact, some people have, have left the city because of, of, of the image. And, and so let's start with Mr. Burns, the image of the city of Watertown. Is it, is it negative right now, and, and what do you do to change it?
I think, I, I think it is negative. I think the people, though, that have a true passion for the city, it's positive in their eyes. I try to be as positive as possible. One of the biggest things I like is when you go in someplace, chances are you're going to know somebody. We still have that small-town feel, but yet, look at all the amenities that we have that larger cities would have, and frankly, that's due to Fort Drum. I think what we need to do is very simple. A lot of the things we've been talking about tonight, I think that, first of all, our government needs to act like they get along because that's a major headline on the news. I think that we need to fix up the blight and make sure that people can afford to continue to live here.
Mr. Gerbrandt, same question. Image?
Yeah, I, I think we as locals tend to be more negative of, of the city's image than maybe people that are from outside of here. I, I've spoken to a lot of people that, you know, have come to the area through Fort Drum or, or just through, through work, and they fell in love with the area, they've fallen in love with the, the summers, some crazy people even fall in love with the winters. And I, I think that, that we, to help improve the image, however, I think it's a lot of the long-term issues that we've talked about. It's blight, I think, you know, it's, it's helping with the homeless issue, homelessness issue, and then it's also, you know, trying to bring more business, more well-paying jobs into the city. But, yeah, I, I, I think there's always room to improve in terms of image, but I do think we're harder on ourselves than maybe outsiders may see us.
Mr. Monaco, being retired from, from the city, you may still have friends that work within it. Is morale okay? Is, is the image a problem?
Not particularly okay, from what I hear. You know, it's kind of sad when you hear your neighbor say, oh, I got to get home, I got to get the council meeting on Monday night. It's better, cheaper than a movie. That's sad. That's sad, okay? You know, and if people put comments on, it's like, we, you can, you can disagree, but at the end of the night, hopefully you can all agree to be back to be somewhat civil, okay? I think there's been some serious discourse on, on the council. It's just been not good image for the city for the last, say, five years. It just, when you hear about it, hey, I got a passion for this, I lived here all my life, and I'm the senior person on this, at this table, and it's sad when you hear that. When you, my neighbor go, oh, I got to get, we sold my house, he goes, I got to get going. I go, where you headed? He goes, oh, I got to turn the thing on. Come on, that's, that's, you know, you want to watch it to see what the business is, but if you want to watch it to see the fighting among, come on, you know, that's, that's not good. That's a negative perception. And, and when you see people pushing carts down where their, every possession they have, a shopping cart down Factory Street, and the thing tips over and they're trying to pick up their stuff, that's a negative, not just picking on Factory Street, but had to see that here a couple days ago. That's a negative perception of the city also. You know, the unhoused population is, is a serious issue. You know, they've got the, trying to get a couple, some buildings open for people to go, you know, thanks for the Salvation Army and the church up off State that does have a soup, I don't know if that's the word to use, they do feed people, and they have the warming center at the Salvation Army. So most people, there's all kinds of help, but you want the help there, it's like taking the dog to, to drink. You can take him to the water, but he doesn't have to drink it, and I think that's part of the problem with people. They don't want, they don't want to conform to whatever the regulations are.
We're going to talk more about homelessness here in a second? Nope, totally fine, but I'll just move on to Mr. Osborne in terms of the image for the city of Watertown.
Yeah, I think Pete actually hit the nail right on the head. I agree with him 100%. I mean, it's, it's kind of difficult for me, there's negative issues out there, but it's difficult for me to be negative about the city, and I'm very idealistic about it. I'm still very, very hopeful, and I'm, I'm just as passionate as well. But I also agree with Pete when he says, you know, there has been a negative image, primarily because I think there's been a lot of dysfunction over the last several years, five years. And I think that it's been at a cost, it's been at the detriment to the public, really. And I think really, all the folks that I've talked to going door to door, there's a strong desire to see some cohesiveness on local, in our local government, and to really focus on the issues that matter to them, that matter to us, and addressing those issues, you know? But, yeah, I, I think, I think that negative image can, can potentially be reversed, you know, potentially in this upcoming election, hopefully.
Ms. Ruggiero, same question about image?
Yes. Well, I will say that in my first two years on city council, we had that cohesiveness, we had a team that worked and worked well together, and that was under former Mayor Joe Butler Jr. His leadership, even though if he didn't agree on a vote, he would let it go. He did not rush to social media and blast people for however they voted. He basically was like, eh, you know, you lose, you lose a vote, you move on, sort of like what Tom Walker said, you know, before he passed away. And, you know, he would, he would communicate with us about different events. Hey, I- with us about different events. Hey, are you going? Because he really wanted the council to be together and be a team and and go to different events. You know, unfortunately, when when, you know, former Mayor Smith got in, it was, we're going to cut the pool. We're going to demolish it. We're going to get rid of the rescue truck. We're going to, you know, keep on fighting the fire department any way we can. There was a lot of negativity. And then obviously, when councilmen only got on, there was so much friction because they couldn't agree on anything. And I mentioned it the other night, you know, when I thought for sure there was going to be a fight between them, the next meeting, I wore a referee shirt to help diffuse the situation and add a little levity so that we could at least get back on track. I can work with anybody. I would look forward to working with anybody that's sitting at this table, because everybody is talking about the same common goal is working together. And I I kind of miss that. But I will say, the last year and a half, I think things have quieted down. I think that we're really trying to work together more, and that that really makes a difference. As far as what outsiders say, the new pastor of Asbury showed up at the recent council meeting and said, I'm an outsider. I love the zoo. I love the park. I love Watertown. And he said, other people are negative. He says, I am very happy here. And he was really wanting to embrace Watertown. I'm a positive, optimistic person, and so I like to try to see the good in everything. I get it with with the homeless, but with the building on Main Ave that will be opening soon, I'm hoping that that will help take care of some of those problems. And I understand there's some who don't want help no matter what. I it was not too long ago, somebody messaged me about people that were in the fountain washing their clothes because they were homeless. And, you know, we we have to balance, you know, what how do we help them? But also, we want to try to stop that so that you don't see that negativity or somebody doesn't drive by and and make fun of it. And I've heard those comments, too, about, wow, your meetings are more exciting than, you know, the county meetings because they're done in 20 minutes. And I think that we've gotten it down to maybe under an hour in a lot of cases, but there is more room for improvement. But it all depends on people's personalities.
True.
And I think everybody that seems, you know, that's here, if I was reelected, I certainly would be happy to work with any of them.
Mr. Shore, image. Is it a problem?
Image has been a problem. I mean, there was a time not too long ago that there was a ratings fight between the city of Watertown and the city of Augsburg as to what was going on. It's just a good good to see that there's a lot of passion. It just got to it has to be toned down just a little bit. The Oakley Che have agreed to disagree. I mean, this has been the negative, other negative parts have been, of course, what we're going to talk about shortly, the homelessness, the crime in the area, the mental health issues that have been going around. Things have been worked out that those things are slowly getting worked on, you know, and current council with all the the biting back and forth, that's again, you know, hopefully, that'll get alleviated here in a little while. Watertown's a great place to live because it is one of the only safe places left in the state of New York to raise a family safely. My mother was raised here. My father was born and raised in Newark, New Jersey. They got married. They moved back to New Jersey for a very short period of time. They had the riots in 1967. My mother went and said, hey, let's go home. And that's what they did. They came back here. They raised a family. They raised me. They raised my brothers. They brought my father's family up here. This is one of the only safe places left in this city to raise people. And I want to see it thrive, and I want to see it to continue. And we can't keep doing it backbiting with each other and and having these other little issues come up that we need to fix. And we've got to fix them. We got to fix them together. You know, that's the way I see it.
Mr. Velasco, same question. Image?
Yeah, definitely. So it really comes down to optics. It really comes down to how we look to the community outside of the city of Watertown. It is tough when I used to have to choose between watching council meetings and watching Monday Night Football. It's almost, you know, I like to call it, it's political theater. It's an episode of As the City Terms. I'm ready to see a series finale, which is why I'm up here. So things like council members sparring with city staff, you know, you're not going to want to work for an organization if your job or your job performance is constantly being being criticized. I know if I was being criticized, I would leave an organization. It's been mentioned, cleaning up the city, addressing blight. Biggest thing is, what do the main roads look like? You know, if you're not from the area, we have a large population from Fort Drum. My family was affiliated with Fort Drum. We love the city. My parents live just outside the city, but we stayed here because it's a small town and it has charm, and we feel safe here, and we love it here. But really, drive down State Street. Someone alluded to it. You see folks pushing carts. You see, you know, there's been these videos posted online lately of people getting in the fights on Public Square, and not a big deal, but I see the e-scooter problem. You know, there's a certain level of, I don't want to say lawlessness, because there is law and order in Watertown, not the show, talking about TV a lot. It, you know, it's sometimes unfair the way the community, the way the city of Watertown looks to the outside world. And, you know, it's a political season. It is rhetoric to a point, but it's also, we're up here to make a difference. We're up here because we see the population falling, and we see a population that's growing increasingly dissatisfied. You know, taxes are going up. What are residents getting for that? You know, you're seeing more blight. And I'm sure it feels to many in the city that crime is going up. You see the incidents. You see the fights. You see the homelessness. You know, you read the police blotter. Some of that we can attribute to, unfortunately, New York State's weaker crime policies. But, you know, some of that can be attributed to the increase in social services in the city, the declining tax base, the loss of small businesses. You know, as your middle class shrinks, you know, what are you left with? Well, you're left with more blight, and you're left with more despair. Reason I'm up here, main reason I'm up here, really, is I want to be the biggest cheerleader for Watertown, as odd as that sounds. I accessed the American dream here. I stayed here. I went off. I got an education. I can count on one hand the amount of people from my graduating class I still talk to. Most of them left the area, graduated from Watertown High School in 2012. A lot of those folks left the area. Some of them are still here, but we're few and far between at this point. That's a problem. It's leading to a brain drain. You know, if there's not good jobs, and there is a stagnating economy, and people are worried about their taxes going through the roof, the number was mentioned 60, 70, 80%. You know, Dunkirk, New York recently passed an 84% tax rate increase. Population similar to ours, you know, a lot of our cities in New York State, we hear about the Rust Belt a lot. We Watertown can be considered a Rust Belt city. You know, we need something to draw people here. I mentioned Micron earlier. I really hope the investment goes well. I really hope that it does draw people to the area. Let's clean up the main streets. Let's clean up the perception. Let's, you know, put on our put our best foot forward and show that Watertown is an attractive, affordable place to live, you know, to raise a family.
So let's talk about homelessness now, because that is a question that we got here and kind of vague and kind of kind of more specific, but it's not going to be solved by a single legislative body, right? The city council, and I think collaboratively, it needs to needs to be addressed. I believe that that would be an answer. But how do you think the city is doing right now, I guess, is the question, with addressing homelessness, including conversations or working with others to solve the issue? Mr. Velasquez, we'll start with you. Homelessness and and how how is it right now? Do you give the city give the city a grade with how it's doing right now?
I would give the city a solid C. And there's reasons why. You can't blame the city specifically for its response to the homelessness issue. There's a large unhoused population there, as I previously mentioned, big increase in social services in the city, kind of pushing out a lot of the middle-class folks, declining tax base. But, you know, I mentioned earlier, I want to collaborate. I want to, I saw that the mayor posted the other day, we're talking social media, that there were conversations with the county going on. I want to see those conversations happen with a lot greater frequency moving forward. Homelessness and the unhoused population, that's not only a city problem. That is also a county problem, and honestly, to a point, that's a state problem. So we need to work with our partners at the county and state level to encourage action. You know, the council's not the end-all, be-all. There are steps that we can take to make Watertown a better place. You know, we talk about the property on Main Ave. That's a start, but we need to ensure that, you know, our community partners and partners outside the city of Watertown see this as the same issue, and they see the problems it's causing in the city.
Mr. Shore, same problem in terms of if you want to give the city a grade on this. And how's it going so far? I mean, with building the new facility over on East Main?
Well, I'm far from one to give grades out. It is it is a county issue, a county-wide issue. The reason it becomes focused on the city is because the city is the the seat of the county and the most populous area. So these individuals will be migrating towards the where they can get their, I don't want to say handouts, but where they can get their help to help them live better. We need to get more cooperation from the county. I would like to see these individuals vetted to find out from where they are coming from. It's one thing if they are from our people from within our county. But when you start getting people that are from outside of the state that have been coming in, that becomes a problem. I would like to see them vetted. I would like to see homeless vets get a priority over anything else because they've served their country. I would hate to say it, but to vet these people, find out where they're coming from, if they're not from here, find some way to send them back to where they came from, and to let those people in those communities and take care of their own, is basically. I want us with our money to take care of our own from our people in our community and and have these other people sent back to their with help, but to back to their community and let their community take care of them.
Ms. Regiro, same question. Homelessness. How is the city doing? And is the city working enough with the county or vice versa? The county working enough with the city on this?
Sure, thank you. Actually, I had firsthand experience, and I want to say it was probably back in November of 2022, when we were getting a big snowstorm, and there were numerous homeless people that were camped out in JV Ys under the pavilion. And if you remember, somebody bought tarps to try to help cover cover it up and keep the snow out. And the mayor at the time was upset about the tarps and who put them in and who allowed that. Instead, it was, where are these people going to go? Because there's going to be two feet of snow within a day. And so I worked with others to find a temporary shelter. The county approved it. And, you know, I helped organize getting cots in there from the Red Cross. At that time, it was the thing to do, and they ended up with at least 30 people in there. And and that's just the start. I mean, that was, you know, we've heard it, people say, oh, well, it's not the city's responsibility, but it's more like we need to work with the county. They have the resources. They have the social workers, and and we don't. But the other thing, too, is that, you know, the city did help with some funding for the shelter that was at Pine Street that's closed. But yes, Thrive and Neighbors of Watertown are working together with the property on Main Ave. I think that that certainly is going to help. We don't know of a construction start date yet for the other property on Commerce Drive that will be for homeless, I believe, the elderly and vets as well. So I think that hopefully, if that goes through, that will help take care of that situation. But like I said, we do need to, we do need to work together. And I think it was the urban mission that does annual surveys of the homeless, because they know where some of these people basically camp out, to basically, you know, check with them. Why haven't they gone somewhere? Do they need anything and so forth? So it's really working together with the county. And I think with these shelters that are coming online, I really hope that that will help reduce it. But, you know, it came to a head a couple years ago with that snowstorm, and that put it front and center. The same thing with the Factory Street property, when that unfortunately codes condemned that like at midnight and and sent everybody out. And that was the worst thing to do. So I think people are now learning from those mistakes and trying to move on and improve that.
Mr. Osborne, you've you've seen the homelessness and what it used to not be and what it is now today. You and I have talked about this a little bit in other interviews. Is the city doing enough right now? Is there more to do?
If we're still giving it grades, I'll I'll give it an incomplete at this point. But it's it's a very, very complicated issue. It's it's very systematic. I work with this population regularly. I think constructing two new housing units to assist the housing and or to assist the homeless and getting them housed is a step in the right direction. I think it will mitigate the problem. I don't think it will solve it. I think there's it needs to be a systematic effort, collaborative effort between the county, the city, all these service providers that have popped up everywhere. I don't think the state has helped in this regard at all, because there's, I mean, they dismant the state had dismantled the mental health system in the state for, I don't know. So we have a lot of people with mental health issues out there that end up getting on drugs and then end up being homeless. There's also individuals out there that, you know, choose not to take personal responsibility. I mean, if you're if you are going to seek services, there are some strings to attach to that. And, you know, if you want to get these services, you have to follow through with those with those things. And I think some of them just choose not to. I think it's going to take a really larger effort, community effort, to really kind of get this issue in a better direction.
Mr. Monaco, the same question, please.
I think the councilwoman is kind of pretty close on this. When the 661 Factory Street, when they condemned that in the night, they had 232 West Main last year, they bought the city boarded it up. There's probably always been some homelessness, just not to the extent that we've seen it in the last two or three years, due to the fact that I'm not sure the number of residents were on Factory Street, and they were camped out in tents behind the building. And then they moved and then this deal with the winter, I do recall that, because I was still working at the time. And, you know, what are you going to do to these people? They're they're trying to get out of the cold, you know, and praise to the Salvation Army for opening up a warming center in the winter. They used to have ones who, like, like as Doug said, you know, some choose not to follow the regular the rules that you have to follow if you want help. You got to be drug tested. You got to be this. Well, they don't want to do that. So if you don't want to follow the rules, I guess you're on your own. But then you leave and you then you just leave messes all over town. You know, like I said, I was on Factory Street like this week, and there was a guy and a gal with a dog, and they were pushing this cart. It was just looked like a haystack, and the thing tipped over, and there was junk all over the road. And they were camping and one up by one morning, and they were, there was two people camped in a doorway up there on the south side of Factory Street. It was it's been it's not a business there anymore, but it's pretty good alcohol, so you get out of the weather. And I'd give the city a C, but like everybody said, you know, this county has a they created a position of, not sure the name of the position, to help the homeless and find 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 shelter for them. And there's two buildings that are being going to one being constructed and one that's going to be. And they closed the one that was a shelter for men on Pine Street. They state funding, defunded, or whatever word you want to use. So they had to go someplace. You know, last year, people were sleeping under the maple tree in front of the library. Now, what kind of image does that project when somebody comes through on a Sunday morning if you're traveling through and you see two people stretched out in the margin in front of the power library? So it's work to be done.
Mr. Garabrant, same question.
Yeah, it's it's hard to give a grade because it it feels as though we've kind of said it's the county's responsibility. And that's not a criticism. It feels like it mostly should be the the county's responsibility, but that doesn't make me feel better as as Mr. Monaco alluded to, when my my wife's pushing a stroller to the library, and there's homeless camped out either on the lawn or at City Hall. So I am I'm I'm hesitant to put more low more low-income housing in the city, just because those tend to be those tend to be run by nonprofits. And we, 32% of property within the city is tax exempt currently. And so that's, if that continues to grow, we're going to have a real problem as a tax base. But to help alleviate the homelessness issue, what I'd like to propose is we put together a committee or a task force that's full of a diverse group of people, of law enforcement, of county officials, of people from, you know, nonprofit organizations and professionals that deal with this and to get all those people with different backgrounds and different viewpoints in a room and discuss root causes and discuss what's working for you, what could, what isn't working, what should we be doing more of, what should we be doing less of. As Doug kind of mentioned, a collaborative approach as a community to help see how we can alleviate this issue.
Mr. Burns, homelessness.
Sure. I will give a grade of B. And the reason I will go as high as that is probably about a month and a half ago, there was a displaced individual that took up, we'll say, housing in my neighborhood. He would sleep on a bench that is part of a Samaritan property. As soon as people would arrive to the professional building, he'd get up and go hang out at Stewart's until they closed the building down. Then he'd go back to the bench. Eventually, he decided to move and kind of create a little sanctuary out back at one of my neighbor's houses. She called the police and within 20 minutes, the police had him packed up and on his way. Later that day, I was driving down Court Street and that's kind of where he made it to. I think our biggest issue, it's a mental health crisis among these people. There are enough services that we have for these individuals to get help. It's just a matter of getting them to that standpoint mentally where they will accept the help. I really do hope that these new apartment buildings will help, but I have my reservations about that. And as several people have said, it is a county issue, but the city has to step up and be part of that solution with the county because we're seeing the majority of the displaced people right here in the city of Watertown.
So we only have a few minutes left and it's ready for a closing statement if you wish and give a pitch as to why city voters should elect you. And as you do that, if you'd like to mention who else on this panel you wouldn't mind working with because people are voting for two, please do that. That would be interesting to hear. You don't have to, but it would be interesting. So as luck would have it, I'll start with Mr. Burns in terms of your first, for the closing argument, please.
Sure. So we've gone over a lot tonight. As I look out in the crowd here, I know quite a few faces and quite a few faces that I think know me for a long time. So would just like to remind everybody, and I'll go back to what Jeff said, honestly, I'll work with anybody. That's, I'm a team player, but I do want to bring some of these ideas to the council that we talked about tonight. I just think that it's important to really start reining in taxes, making sure that we keep that in check. And I've said it before, I'll be 35 next month, which that's the median age of individuals in Watertown. So not too young, but I'm not, not too old either. So I think that I can bring a sensible approach to the council. I would also like to just put out there that early voting starts this weekend. And also unique this year is you do not have to vote at your polling district. You can go to any of the available polling sites and they'll print you a ballot right there. So more ways to vote than ever. And just appreciate everybody coming out tonight. Again, appreciate Jefferson Community College and WWNY.
Mr. Garabrant, your closing argument, statement, whichever it may be.
Yeah, so in closing, I'd just like to acknowledge how important it is for the city to have a council that is accountable to the residents of Watertown, a council that firmly says that the buck stops with them and doesn't blame city staff, political foes, or even the residents for their own failed decision making. In preparation for these forums, I dug into past interviews and debates and I watched a large portion of the 2015 city council primary debate and the topics were alarmingly similar to what we discussed tonight. There were zombie homes, a fire department collective bargaining, crime, and the national grid hydro power contract, as well as an approaching fiscal cliff, just among others. In the 10 years since that debate, most of these longstanding issues have not been meaningfully addressed. In the case of the fiscal cliff, not only did we as a city not avoid it, but we spent our way into accelerating towards it. It's apparent Watertown can no longer afford to leave these issues unaddressed. And I understand they're difficult, challenging issues, but I truly believe that if we have the right people elected to council, then we can work together to face them head on in a proactive, not reactive manner. And Watertown's brightest days may still be yet to come. And I've knocked on over 600 doors during this campaign cycle and I hope to knock on a few hundred more before the primary. And that's so important to me because I want to hear firsthand on what's concerning city residents. City council's primary responsibility is to be the voice of the taxpayer and to be true representatives of residents. And so I'll carry those concerns with me even as my, on my time as a council member. And then to answer, I guess, your question, I'd be willing to work with anybody up here. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Monaco.
I was about to say, I've been on school boards for 25 years. I don't know how many people, probably 30 maybe, and work with everybody, worked with three or four different superintendents, which would be comparable to a city manager. But I can get along with everybody. Some people might not think that, but that's beside the point. I guess you've heard the comments from all of us up here. The choice you make on June 24th or if you want to start early voting on the 14th and then do it throughout next week at the county building. And I think it'd be good, just to thought is the Board of Elections sent out cards that are not correct. They say, everybody got a card, no matter where you live, it said Midtown Towers on it. So maybe that's a public service channel from your station, you could make pretty much, put this out as a big item that you can go to any of the six polling places and vote. So, I mean, because there's people who live across the street from St. Anthony, like St. Anthony, like myself, they said Midtown Towers. But anyway, that's neither here nor there. The city cannot continue spending at the pace it has in the last few years. The fund balance has been depleted. To balance the budget and is Shane, the same thing 15, 10 years ago in 2015, this fiscal cliff. Balance in the budget with fund balance was not, was kind of like the state selling the canal authority. They got the throughway, just one pocket to the other. As I stated a couple nights ago, changes will have to be enacted. Unfortunately, there is a strong possibility that reductions in workforce and reductions in some services will have to be addressed in the coming years. The city cannot sustain the present model going forward or insolvency is a possibility. Starting in 26, 27, Mr. Billis, the comptroller stated, there will be a levy increase of approximately $2.4 million just in salary and benefit before any inflationary items are added in. I'll do my best to keep spending in line. As I stated, it may come to service in workforce reductions. The city issues are not such a revenues issue, it's a spending issue. The fund balance has been reduced by about $10 million when they take, when they paid for part of the park pool with fund balance, they ended up bonding for a portion, maybe a third to 40% of it. They spent the $3.4 million at the, for the land purchase in the park and about $4 million or whatever on the Flynn Pool. I'd like to thank, think to thank the Seven News and JCC for hosting this event, but I'd like to just say, please vote on June 24th or early vote or whatever suits your needs the best. And I think anybody up here, you've heard it, pretty much everybody here I think is in kind of in lockstep that the city needs to do, buckle down and get its act in order. So please vote on, I said, the 24th or early voting starts this Saturday. Have a good evening and for those in attendance, thanks for attending and here again, thanks to Mr. Cole and his organization and JCC Community Studies for having us here. I appreciate it.
Mr. Osborne, your final thoughts, please.
Yeah, so I think I could work with anyone up here. I think everybody sincerely, up here sincerely wants what's best for the city. I think just we may disagree on how we can get there, you know, and it doesn't always need to get overly political or nasty or negative, right? I mean, I think, I think we can get beyond that and I think, I think a new council will definitely do that. But Jeff, I want to thank you. I want to thank Channel 7, JCC for having us, all of you here tonight. Like many of you, I share the same concerns regarding our aging infrastructure, perpetual tax increases, petty politics, the influx of homelessness, crime, drugs and blight, but most importantly, the financial solvency of the city's future. We cannot continue to spend hard earned taxpayer money frivolously and place the burden of double digit property tax increases on the backs of property owners and small businesses year after year. We'll only continue to stymie growth and chase out our current residents while deterring potential residents from settling here. This election cycle is not just about pools, golf courses and zoos, although they are major contributors to our financial distress. It's about responsible governance. The next council will need to make serious and difficult decisions on how the city will operate in the future under tighter circumstances. It's not a matter of austerity, as one candidate suggested, but out of necessity. If we do not take immediate action, we may not have pools, zoos, golf courses, or any other amenity, let alone a city to have them in. If elected, I promise you, I will do my part to be a steward for the taxpayer. I will put petulant politics aside so we can focus on the actual needs of our city. I will push for proactive policies that are cost effective and fiscally responsible. I'm prepared to make the tough decisions on day one with a cohesive and deliberative council to put our city on the right path. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Closing thoughts, Mr. Girro.
Sure, thank you. And I think like everybody else has said, I think that I would, I could work with anyone here in listening to how everybody has reacted, their tone, their stance on things. I actually, I would say that I agree with at least one to two things that each candidate has mentioned. So I think that certainly helps build a good consensus when, you know, when you can find that. And that's the important thing is trying to find those ways to be able to work with people. I have a sense of humor. It's always helped me and I've always been willing to work with other new council members that have been available when they want to ask questions or say, hey, I don't, you know, how do you do this? Because there is a big learning curve with the job. There's a lot to learn. There's so many different departments and to understand what each one does, their projects and so forth, it is, it can be, it can be overwhelming for some people. I know that I think people do recognize that some members on council play politics when they've lost on a vote and I'm not one of them. I can move on and that's the important thing. As Tom Walker said, you know, if you lose a vote, you move on and go to the next thing. And I think that's, that's important. And I think that a lot of things have settled down. I know that I would work on trying to diffuse tensions between Mayor Smith, former Mayor Smith and Councilman Olney because that was very toxic. And I would try to do what I could to diffuse that conversation whenever it came up. But I do want to say that, you know, we've heard people talk, yeah, we could have had maybe seven and a half million, seven million in the fund balance, but then again, you know, that would have only lasted a couple of years to keep balancing the budget. So those purchases weren't the problem. We, some of us wanted to bond for it. We've heard people here say, oh, well, that's like using a credit card. Well, you don't use a credit card to buy a house. When you have the city comptroller advising you, it's fiscally responsible to bond for something. If they want to bond for a $300,000 trash truck, that is what he recommended. Why would we not do it for million dollar purchases, multimillion dollar projects? That is what we should have done. That money should have been here, but people played politics because they didn't like the project. So that was their way to try to make it not happen. I think we have to look at, you know, do we have the possibility of micron people coming here, whether it's for tourism or housing? We have to decide, do we want amenities to offer to the public so that they come here and visit and we have a tourist destination? Or do we close everything and just say, well, you know, nice knowing you at Thompson Park, it's done, it's over with and move on? I mean, yeah, we have critical decisions to make, but we also have to start looking at more ways to do revenue. But to start saying that we need to close everything, that's why you have some employees that are leaving. That's why we're losing our golf course manager because someone said, well, maybe we need to close the golf course. And, you know, I don't blame him. He needs to find a more stable job. So that does make a big difference. But I think that some of the things that I would like to say is, you know, I helped reengage the Neighborhood Watch program. I did vote for additional police officers because we've needed them. We had $22 million in ARPA funds that have gone through infrastructure, water mains, sidewalks and many other projects for the city, new playgrounds. We have a senior center now, not the city is responsible for, but I certainly helped spearhead that. I ended the million dollar fight with the fire department because why keep it going when you know you're going to lose? And that's exactly what happened. I advocated for adding back in a rescue truck that the former mayor got rid of. Our emergency response to residents is highly important and I pushed for that to come back. And I certainly am happy to see that functioning very well. I'm not afraid to ask questions. I've mentioned about working with the county before and I certainly would do everything that is possible to continue those discussions going forward and see what else we can collaborate with on the county. I do want to mention when I ran for reelection in 2021, the Flynn Pool was a big topic and I advocated for that. You voters who voted for me put me in first place because many of you saw the need for that on the north side. And I'm proud that we have pools that are now handicap accessible where we didn't have them before. You know, we have to get with the times. We have to look at how are we going to serve everybody and all the populations and that certainly helped in that case. So I certainly would be humbled and honored for your vote. I would love to be able to continue serving and I hope that if I'm fortunate enough that I would certainly look forward to working with any of the gentlemen here. And I hope that everybody here has heard what we've all had to say and that you can take away those topics and give you something to think about. Please remember to vote on June 24th. Thank you, JCC and WWNY. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Shore.
We all have wants and needs, whether you're wealthy, middle class, working class or struggling to get by, one thing we all have in common is a budget. We manage our households by making tough choices, prioritizing what's necessary and planning carefully for the future. Our city should be no different. As someone who's been part of a family business here, who was born and raised here and educated here and lived the majority of my life here, I know what it means to make every dollar count. We can't afford to be reckless with taxpayer money. Just like we wouldn't ignore a leaky roof or to buy a new home or to buy a TV, our city can't keep adding unnecessary projects and amenities while neglecting the critical infrastructure we depend on. Of course, there are those who want pools, parks, zoos and golf courses, but while those things are, you know, matter to people, contribute to the quality of life people enjoy, they can't come at the cost of clean drinking water, functioning sewer systems, safe roads, walkable sidewalks and public safety. It's time to refocus our priorities. We need to take a responsible, common sense approach to city government. We need to address our needs first ahead of the wants without going in an unnecessary, further unnecessary debt or burdening future generations. Some say we should be looking, some say we should look into the future, not back in the past. Unfortunately, we have to look a little bit back into the past so that we don't create the same mistakes in the future. I'm running because I believe in accountability, responsibility and putting our city's long-term well-being ahead of short term, short term applause. I believe in leadership that respects your hard earned money as much as you do. Let's bring a little more common sense to city council together. I want to thank Mr. Cole, Channel 7. I would like to thank JCC. I would like to thank the viewers who were here tonight online watching us and I especially like to thank everybody who took the time and commitment under their schedule this evening to be here to listen, all of us, and to listen to your concerns. I would hope that you would vote for me come the primary. Early voting starts this Saturday, June 24th is the primary. Early voting starts this Saturday, June twenty-fourth is the primary. Thank you again.
Thank you. Mr. Valesquez.
Yes, definitely. So dysfunctional city government and an unhealthy obsession on the past has come at the expense of our city's future. I'm thankful to have had the opportunity to hear your concerns, thoughts and questions. We face many challenges in the years ahead. I'm confident that by employing a collaborative approach, we can face these challenges together. I believe in sound fiscal management, long-term planning, addressing critical infrastructure. I know as I speak about critical infrastructure, there was a water main break in the city. Huge shout-out to the hard-working men and women at the DPW for addressing that. I believe in streets where residents feel safe, less blight, more economic growth and a higher quality of life. It's time to put the petty politics of yesterday in the past and focus on Watertown's tomorrow. I respectfully ask for your vote when early voting begins, this Saturday, June fourteenth, or on election day, June twenty-fourth. You know, I'm up here to serve the very same city that made me who I am today. I have the unique perspective of not being a lifelong Watertown resident. I like to see, I would like to see more folks in this position. I'd like to see more folks who come to Watertown or for whatever reason, employment or family, and they stay here. They make a life. You know, they live the American dream. They show that cities like Watertown can still grow and thrive. And I believe it starts with electing new, a new council member or two new council members here in November. I would like to thank Channel Seven, Jefferson Community College, as well as everyone in attendance and everyone watching at home. Thank you and, well, thank you for spending your time with us, especially on such a nice night. And thank you.
Thank you very much. And that does conclude our event. I'll extend the thank yous to all the candidates. With so many, patience is a virtue to wait for your turn. But thank you very much for being here and taking the time to be able to speak with us. There was some substance, there were some conversations, good information and viewpoints. And that's the goal of this. And we thank you for being here and taking the time to do it. So respectfully, you're running and it takes a lot to do that, so thank you for doing it.
Did you say you could work with anyone?
I thank you to all of you here. We appreciate you being here and those online at our website as well, JCC. Thank you and the talented folks with Channel Seven. Thanks for all the efforts. That is our program. We appreciate you watching. Enjoy your evening.